Good morning. The City Council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. The voting is now open. If you need support or you're logged in, please raise your hand. I will now take a voice vote for those who have not voted in the e-vote. Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderman Hall, present. Alderman David Moore, not present. Alderwoman Taylor, not present. Alderman Mosley, not present. Alderwoman Teparas, present. Alderwoman Scott, not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa, not present. Alderman Hopkins? Alderman Hopkins is present. Alderwoman Mitz, not present. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. There are forty-three members that are present, forty-four members that are present, so we do have a quorum. There are a number of alders who have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59. Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation of the following alders? Moore, Taylor, Scott, Mitz, and those. Those are the only ones. Can I get a motion to approve? All right, it's been moved and approved. Thank you very much. Let me just make sure I do it all right. Y'all approval?
Alderman Moore should have been called.
Moore was called. All of those in favor of those members being able to participate remotely, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I do want to acknowledge that we have the legendary, one of the most remarkable human beings on the planet, has joined us today. Thank you for gracing us with your presence, the Reverend Jesse Jackson Senior. So please remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation. Could you? Please remain standing for our invocation, which will be delivered today by Reverend Carl Wagner Shear from St. John's Episcopal Church.
I'm going to invite us all to take a deep breath and let it out slowly. O God of justice and peace, we give you thanks that we are here in this place at this time. We give you thanks for this city of Chicago, which brings such a wealth of people and experience and diversity. We know, O Creator, that you love diversity because you made so much of it. But, O God, sometimes it's hard. Help us to recognize in each person that spark of creation which you have put in each of us. We ask especially your prayers and presence with our mayor and city council members. They have been called to public service, and yet we expect them to be all things to all people. Help them to stay true to who they are, their sense of justice and peace and what is right. Help them to look always for the common good. Loving God, remind us as we listen that we are only angry when we care about things. And as my friend in the Choctaw Nation says, "We are as strong as what makes us anxious." Bring a spirit of openness, of open ears and open minds and open hearts, that in all of our discussions and decisions we first open ourselves to know the other person, to recognize that spark of the divine in them and hold us and keep us in relationship, especially when we disagree. We pray all this in the name of all that is true and good and holy. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. This is a portion of the meeting for public comments. Mr. Clerk, I want to remind this body that today there are a number of speakers which will go forward today. I would respectfully ask that you allow each person who has taken time out to provide public testimony today, that you give them the courtesy to get through their entire presentation and keep your responses at the very end to a minimal. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today is Jessica Lee.
Please press star six to unmute.
Mr. Clerk, let's move forward. We can come back to it.
Our next speaker is Shoshana Canover.
Good morning. I'm Shoshana Canover, senior rabbi at Temple Sholem of Chicago. There's a Jewish saying, "Words that come from the heart enter the heart." I hope this prayer from my heart enters yours. God of righteousness in this time of increased suffering and strife, show us a different way than the escalation of pain in the name of finding a way to peace. God of compassion, stop us from narrowly portraying two sides in this conflict, characterizing one side as oppressors and the other as victims. We are all on the same side, the side of human flourishing and compassion and peace. Help us open our hearts to the suffering of Palestinians and Israelis, Muslims, Christians, and Jews. Embolden this council to acknowledge the suffering of Jewish Israelis, afraid of those in Hamas would make good on their pledge, that the October seventh attack was just the first, and there will be a second, a third, a fourth. Deny Hamas the ability to again attack Israelis or use Palestinians as human shields and give this council the will to say that in this resolution. God, end this suffering, the suffering of displaced people whose lives feel like a nightmare. Help us manifest your compassion in the face of fear and pain. God of dignity, make your presence felt to all who need you. Just as you walked with me weeks ago in near Oz where Hamas terrorists massacred and kidnapped the elderly and even young children, accompany those cowering in tunnels and trapped under rubble. God, be with Fear and Ariel Bilbo from near Oz, whose onesies and sun hats still hang on clotheslines. I know that it is hard for some to think of them when two million Palestinian people are displaced and thousands have been killed in this cruel war. God, be with them, with all of them, with Palestinian children who are alone and afraid and with hostages who have been dragged underground into tunnels built to protect Hamas fighters with funding and supplies meant for humanitarian relief. God of dignity, God of courage, give this council the will to call for an immediate and unconditional release of all hostages in this resolution. God of history, remind us that the world is watching, our children are watching. We will be remembered not only for this resolution but for the discourse around it. Allow us to listen to each other when we voice our pain, our lived experiences, instead of shouting each other down. Guide us in the ways of your prophet, Micah, to act justly, love mercy, and walk humbly. God of hope, show us the way forward across the ocean, helping Israelis and Palestinians create a genuine peace based on recognition and direct negotiations. And right here in Chicago, please, God, show us the way to peace and unity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Jessica Lee. Our next speaker is Jody Wicker.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson and Chicago City Council. I'm going to read a few excerpts from an article that was published July nineteenth, 2023, in the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences, PNAS, a peer-reviewed journal of the National Academy of Sciences. PNAS is one of the world's most cited and comprehensive multidisciplinary scientific journals. From the article, Ethics Considerations Aren't the Only Reasons to Shut Down Mink Farms. Mink pose a risk for the emergence of future disease outbreaks and the evolution of future pandemics. For viral pathogens and pandemic potential, mink's biology positions them as an intermediate species in which dangerous adaptations toward human infection can evolve. However, until now, fur farming has not received much attention in this regard. It's crucial that we have the foresight to consider the controls necessary for restricting pathogen emergence in fur farming. Minks are highly susceptible to infection with several viruses that also infect humans. In late 2020, government agencies and academics in Europe and North America repeatedly documented that farmed mink had become infected with SARS-CoV-2, a causative agent of COVID-19. Evidence of mink-adapted viruses spilling back into local communities further demonstrated the poor biosecurity guidelines and practices in the industry. With this in mind, some countries, for example, the Netherlands, shut down mink production altogether. The establishment of animal reservoirs for viruses that evolve on a separate trajectory from variants in humans sets a potential time bomb for reemergence of the virus in humans. Fur farming is banned across many European countries and North American states or territories. Several other regions have set dates for phasing it out. These bans have historically been a response to ethical concerns about the treatment of these animals. We strongly urge governments to also consider the mounting evidence suggesting that fur farming, particularly mink, be eliminated in the interest of pandemic preparedness. Fur farming should be in the same category of high-risk practices as the bushmeat trade and live animal markets. These activities all increase the likelihood of future pandemics. End of article. Please support and co-sponsor 2023-2983, the common sense and humane measure to ban the sale of new fur in Chicago. Thank you very much for your time and consideration today.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Martin Levine.
Good morning, mayor and aldermen and women. I am Martin Levine, the retired chief executive officer of the Jewish Community Centers of Chicago and the Jewish Voice for Peace member. My forty years of work in and for the Chicago Jewish community was driven by the call to bring Jewish values to life. I have painfully walked the steps that brought millions to the places of utter destruction that were the Holocaust, an event that this body called on us to never forget last week. I have been to Israel-Palestine many times over decades. I have seen the pain of two peoples and seen moments where each has been able to recognize they share a common humanity. This morning, I asked you to vote for a resolution that will put Chicago on record as calling for an immediate ceasefire. I do this because of what I've committed my entire working life to. I do this because I believe it is what I, as a Jew, must do. Just days after October seventh, this council felt the need to go on record condemning the acts of violence, the killing of twelve hundred people and the taking of hostages. You recognize the existential meaning of those twelve hundred lives. Now, more than one hundred days later, many of you seem to ignore the death of more than twenty-six thousand people, most of whom are women and children. The daily reports of children needing to have arms or legs amputated, even when anesthetics and sterile conditions are not available, seems not enough for you to act now. Is not the almost total destruction of the housing, hospitals, and of the economy that was marginal before this began enough? Is not the reality of two million people forced to leave their homes, starving and facing epidemics, enough? The lessons we are required to learn from the Holocaust is that it can never happen again and that we must never allow it, by action or inaction, to happen again. As Israel's leaders gather at conferences to discuss the ethnic cleansing of Gaza after they complete its destruction, you cannot sit silently because these are Palestinians and not Israelis. Never again is not for some people. It is for all. We are all created in God's image. We are taught that to save one life is as if we had saved all of humanity. If that lesson is to have any meaning today, it tells us you cannot stand silent while more and more die. The debate over this resolution has wrongly been made to be about whether or not you stand with the Jewish community. If that were so...
Mr. Levine, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Jennifer Husbands.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Husbands, and I am a proud resident and voter in the fortieth ward of Chicago. I requested to speak today to urge the city council to approve the resolution in support of a ceasefire in Gaza. The months since the deadly attack on October seventh have been a time of mourning, a time of learning, and unfortunately, a time of divisiveness in our city and in our country. But it is precisely during these incredibly challenging times that we must let our moral compass be our guide. Through social media, we have borne witness to the mass murder of innocent civilians in Palestine and the complete destruction of homes, schools, mosques, and hospitals. Over twenty-five thousand lives have been lost in Palestine thus far, with countless more missing and injured. Meanwhile, the hostages captured on October seventh have not been returned, and the captives being held in Israel, often for crimes as minor as rock throwing, are still being detained. Many of these captives are women and children. President Biden has defied the will of the American people, as polls have shown that roughly two-thirds of us support a ceasefire, a number that increases to three-quarters of Democrats. Yet he bypassed Congress to send over $250 million of military funding to Israel in December alone, above and beyond the $3.8 billion the United States provides annually for Israel's military and missile defense. What does this have to do with Chicago? This resolution has been criticized for not having enforceability, but I don't think that's the point. The point is that our dollars, taxpayer dollars, are going to fund this war. Our tax dollars are being used to carpet bomb civilians and force Palestinians out of their homes in the Gaza Strip. These dollars are not being used for education, housing, healthcare, food security, gun violence prevention, all things we desperately need more of here in Chicago. As Tupac said, "They got money for war, but they can't feed the poor." I have several friends who volunteer untold hours in mutual aid efforts, purchasing groceries, collecting, organizing, and distributing clothing and hygiene products, helping families furnish their homes, while our government is sending billions of our tax dollars to fund a war where the International Court of Justice recently found plausible evidence of violation of the Genocide Convention by Israel. I urge the city council to join San Francisco, Detroit, Minneapolis, Atlanta, Seattle, Providence, Akron, and others to show that we fully support the United Nations in their charge to maintain international peace and security. A ceasefire would advance the cause of peace and, we hope, begin to create conditions to support a diplomatic process and the release of captives on both sides of the struggle. Chicago would be the largest city thus far to pass the ceasefire measure, and particularly with the Democratic National Convention coming to our city in August, it would send an important message about who we are and what we believe in, just as our courageous high school students showed us yesterday during their walkout. As one of the students said, "We are seeing now how much money our government spends on war, and we're all scared about college debt, and we're scared about healthcare, and we feel the government should be helping us." I thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today, and I am hopeful that you all...
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Hani Jabbar.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. First, I'd like to thank Alderman Rosanna, Alderman Lasparo, every alderman, person, staffer in this very room that has worked tirelessly over the past few months to make our voices heard. Over one hundred days ago, we stood in this very building and practically begged you all to stand with us, to vote against Alderman Silverstein's resolution that we told you was wholly inaccurate, one-sided, and created a very dangerous environment for Arabs and Muslims. We begged you to stand with us, but you did the very opposite. You rejected us. Three days later, Wadi Al Fayumi, a six-year-old boy, was stabbed twenty-six times for being Palestinian and Muslim. Despite this devastating loss and the pain, we continue to show up, we continue to organize, mobilize, and strategize because we knew the stakes. We should not have to fight this hard to convince our representatives to do what they were elected to do, represent us. There are decades when nothing happens, and there are weeks when decades happen. We are in those weeks. The world is waking up to Palestine, and I know there have been a lot of questions in this room of why this matters to us, to Chicago. So let me clarify for you all again. Chicago is home to the largest Palestinian population in the U.S. Chicago gives $20 million to fund the war crimes, to fund the very bombs that are falling on Gaza right now. Twenty million. This reality is not only clear to us, but to thousands across the U.S. CTU, SEIU, Senator Dick Durbin, United Auto Workers Fund have all called for a ceasefire. Thousands of Black pastors have called for a ceasefire. Now it's your turn. This is not only about Palestine. This is about all of us. This is all our fight. This is about Malcolm X's core belief that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. I not only speak to you all as a youth organizer, I speak to you all as an attorney and someone who recently got fired for making a very speech in this room. Most of y'all know me from October. I made a speech. I was fired for that speech that I made in this room from my job as an attorney at a very prominent law firm. I ask you to make my sacrifices worth it, to make our sacrifices worth it. Finally, I speak to you as an Arab constituent and someone who prides myself on being from Chicago, a hub of revolutionary thought, a hub of diversity and thinking. Here we are, one hundred fourteen days since I've been in this, since we've all been in this room. Twenty-six thousand Palestinians have been murdered, half of those who are, of whom are children. Every minute that goes by, more Palestinians die. We, and with one hundred fourteen days later, and we are still debating whether a ceasefire, the bare minimum, the bare minimum, again, should be called. We are at one hundred fourteen days, and we have been thousands in the streets of Chicago. This is the time.
Thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Aya Ali.
I stand here today as a proud Palestinian and as a proud Chicagoan, knowing that these two identities that I should hold should not be in opposition to each other, but rather they should be in support of one another. I would like to thank all the alderpeople that are currently voting yes to the ceasefire resolution and supporting a ceasefire in Gaza. I'd like to thank the Chicago Progressive staffers and the thousands of Chicagoans that have mobilized for Palestine these past few months for their work in making the ceasefire resolution a reality. What's happening in Gaza today is the most extreme form of collective punishment. The images and videos coming out of Gaza would move a rock. What more is there to be said when we see a father holding his children's body parts in a bag? To deprive every single person in Gaza, the old, the young, the sick, the healthy, to deny them food, water, and medical care goes against the most basic principles of humanity. Israel has bombed every school and hospital and has bombed over seventy percent of the buildings in northern Gaza. Israel has targeted healthcare workers, journalists, and college professors, all in an effort to destroy Gazan civil society. These conditions should not be tolerated or justified. I want to tell you of the most recent story of sisters Leanne and Hint Hamada. Leanne called the Palestinian Red Crescent to come rescue her and her family, who were surrounded by Israeli snipers. While Leanne was on the phone, Israeli shots were fired and she was killed. Her sixty-year-old sister picks up the phone and continues to speak to the Red Crescent, and they speak to her for three hours trying to calm her down as the shots continued. They were able to reach her only hours after the phone call, and the Palestinian Red Crescent has since lost contact with her. But please tell me, what is Hint supposed to do now? She's a six-year-old orphan who witnessed the murder of her entire family. She has no more siblings, and her home is destroyed. What kind of military objective does this fulfill? Is this what people consider winning the war to be, by traumatizing children and making them orphans? At this point, calling for a ceasefire is the most common sense, basic response we can expect from our elected officials. Voting yes to this resolution uplifts the call of Chicago's labor unions, Chicago students, and Chicago voters. Palestinians have been targeted since the inception of the Israeli state on stolen Palestinian land. Do you know why there are so many Palestinians in Chicago today? Because our parents and our grandparents were ethnically cleansed from our homeland and replaced by settlers. We are here today as a direct result of Israeli violence. Calling for a ceasefire is the bare minimum. The Chicago Teachers Union, Senator Dick Durbin, SEIU, and hundreds of Chicago organizations have called for a ceasefire. Passing this resolution today has the support of hundreds of thousands of Chicago residents, and I'm looking forward to history being made in these chambers. Vote yes to the ceasefire today and allow Chicago to be on the right side of history today. Free Palestine.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Pamela Scheinman.
Esteemed, esteemed alderpersons, please vote no on a unilateral ceasefire resolution. On October seventh, Hamas terrorists broke a ceasefire and breached Israel's border with Gaza. They invaded civilians' homes and brutally murdered, raped, and tortured twelve hundred Israelis and abducted more than two hundred forty. Given Israel's small size, October seventh is equivalent to fifteen 9/11s. What would American leaders do if Americans faced marauding murderers entering their homes, our homes, and killing our citizens? Hamas is an ISIS-like fanatic group. Its charter calls for killing Jews worldwide and the subjugation of all other nonbelievers. See their... See their charter online. The second paragraph of the Hamas charter says, in quote, "Israel will exist until Islam obliterates it," end quote. Article 13 of the charter says, in quote, "There is no solution for the Palestinian question except through jihad. Initiatives, proposals, and international conferences are all a waste of time and vain endeavors," end quote. Hamas leaders have said they would commit October 7th again and again if given the opportunity. Hamas embeds itself among Gazan civilians, intentionally building their war apparatus under, within, and adjacent to hospitals, kindergartens, mosques, and crowded civilian areas with the sole purpose of using them as human shields. One of our nation's top military experts, John Spencer, Chair of, the Chief of Urban Warfare Studies at West Point at their Modern Institute, published comments on X recently that I quote, "Israel has implemented more measures to avoid civilian casualties than any other military in the history of war." Hamas, on the other hand, has said it does not care about its civilians. Given so many humanitarian crises around the world, why is the Chicago City Council opining on the one conflict where the one Jewish state is facing a terrorist, genocidal enemy who has sworn to commit the same atrocities again and again? The double standard applied to Israel, demonization and delegitimization of the only Jewish state on the planet is a proxy for antisemitism, the three Ds as coined by human rights activist Natyan Shoransky. Any ceasefire resolution that does not demand the unconditional surrender of Hamas and an unconditional release of all the hostages is a win for Hamas terrorists in the Middle East and beyond and a grave loss for Israel and Palestinian civilians alike. Shouldn't our alderpersons stick to their jobs of dealing with crime, homelessness, migrants bus to our city, education, and budgetary problems of Chicago? Thank you.
Thank you. This is a time for, as I've said and expressed before, if you all cannot, take a deep breath, y'all, just relax for a second. I've asked you all respectfully, I see you, Alderman Bill, I've asked you all to respect those who are speaking so that we can hear their full testimony. If you disagree, demonstrate some restraint. There are things that are said oftentimes in this chamber. If I could have your attention, please. There are things that are said in this chamber that many of you will agree or disagree. I restrain myself. I hear things that I agree, and I hear things that I don't agree with. All I'm just asking you all to do is just show a little of humanity, and I know that's the purpose of us being here today, so let's model what we want. I appreciate the debate, I do. It's important for our democracy. I do not want to have to clear this chamber. If you want to participate in this democratic process, I would ask for you to allow those who are speaking to finish their presentation. If you do not want to participate in this process by not allowing people to finish their presentation, I will be asked, I would be forced by you all to clear. Now, what I don't want is a bunch of people shouting at me, though, okay? I understand, I do. And those of you who are organizers, who have done amazing work as an organizer, I would respectfully ask that you, as lead organizers, model the very operation that you want to see take place. There'll be plenty of time for more public display, but respect this chamber, respect the positions that are being carried out, even if you disagree. Do not want to have to direct the Sergeant-at-Arms to clear the chamber. I don't want to do that. I do not want to do that. But you will leave me no choice if you cannot respect the last through speakers, and then at some point, the alders will speak.
President? I would definitely request that you will outward, if you move from the gallery and that Sergeant at Arms directly, I would say...
Thank you, Alderman Bill. I've heard your position. Has everyone heard mine, however? Mr. Clerk? Our next speaker is Rama Azar.
I would like to start by thanking Alderman Rosanna for championing, championing this resolution, as well as all the alders that have confirmed their vote in favor of a ceasefire. Today, nearly 30,000 Palestinians have been murdered thanks to our tax dollars that have directly armed and funded this genocide. Yet you all have the privilege and audacity to sit here and debate whether you think this slaughter should end. We have been chanting on the streets of Chicago every single week about freedom, about liberation, about justice, and we know you can hear us from behind your fortress walls. You just refuse to care. Meanwhile, Netanyahu has repeatedly rejected proposed ceasefire and hostage releases. Do these alders not realize that the Zionist state itself does not care about its own prisoners of war? Do they not realize that Israel has made countless confessions of its intent to commit genocide and would rather focus on annihilating the people of Gaza rather than releasing its own? But you don't have to listen to me say it, because Zionist leaders have said it themselves. Israeli Minister of Defense Yaov Golan says Israel is fighting human animals and will act accordingly. And Israeli President Isaac Herzog says it's an entire nation out there that is responsible. So of course, the International Court of Justice found South Africa's claims of genocide to be plausible when Netanyahu himself said will turn them into rubble. So how on earth is a ceasefire still up for debate? All major labor unions have called for a ceasefire, yet Chicago, which is an alleged hub for labor organizing, still hasn't. Also, more than 1,000 Black faith leaders have pressured Biden for a ceasefire. So it would be an embarrassment to not vote in favor of one while Reverend Jesse Jackson is in this very room. How many more disruptions are needed? How much clearer do we need to, do we need to be when we not only tell you, but show you that there is no business as usual as long as this genocide persists? How much clearer do we need to be when we say that the Palestinian struggle is inherently tied to the struggle for the liberation of all oppressed people from Chicago to Mexico and beyond? You all have a duty to vote yes on Alderman Rosanna's resolution and continue to pressure Biden for a ceasefire. You serve a county that is home to the largest population of Palestinians in America. Palestinians have been here because they were exiled for the last 75 years. For four months, you've heard us loud and clear, and it's a shame that it's taken this long. Don't extend this shame on our city any longer. Vote yes for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza today. Thank you.
[Cheering and applause]
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Nazak.
My name is Nazak, with the Chicago chapter of the U.S. Palestinian Community Network. It is time for the City of Chicago to be on the right side of history, to rise for justice, and to become the largest city in the U.S. to pass the ceasefire resolution. We want to first thank Mayor Brandon Johnson for coming out in support of the ceasefire, and also uplift Alders Rodriguez Sanchez, Laspada, Sigcho Lopez, Fuentes, Rosa, and Taylor for contributing and continuing to uphold the progressive values our great city is known for. According to the U.N., 90% of the 2.3 million people in Gaza have been internally displaced. That is more than 2 million people, many of whom who have been forced to flee multiple times in these four months since October. We are 116 days into Israelis, Israel's onslaught on the people of Gaza, where 26,751 Palestinians have been killed, 10,000 of them children. 65,636 have been injured, and an unknown number are still buried under the rubble. Israel also, just yesterday, entered hospitals in Jenin and killed three patients in cold blood. It continues to target hospitals, holy sites, and civilians in designated safe areas on safe passages with white flags. Tragically, there are no safe places in Gaza any longer. We have an opportunity today in Chicago to accomplish something historic, an opportunity to say that we will not accept staying silent while Israel continues to attempt to annihilate Gaza and wipe its inhabitants away. South Africa bravely stood up at the International Court of Justice, and then the ICJ ruled very clearly that Israel needs to stop killing Palestinians, citing numerous cases of human rights violations by the Israeli military. We Palestinians and Arabs have always studied the struggles of other oppressed peoples, like the South Africans and our Black and Brown friends and allies here in Chicago and the U.S. USPCN has been working tirelessly for decades with Black and Brown communities in Chicago. You've seen us come out against arbitration, in support of police accountability, ECPS, CPAC, Peace Book, Bring Chicago Home, and so many other initiatives that exemplify Black Palestinian and Latino Palestinian solidarity. And we must win all of these struggles together because we cannot win them alone. Like Mayor Johnson said himself, "I am not mayor of the City of Chicago if people weren't pushing." So like we pushed as a broad and diverse community to win that election, let us push to say ceasefire now in the Chicago City Council. Please vote yes on the resolution, and we're asking, as you vote yes today, we ask you vote no on arbitration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period. Thank you very much. This concludes our public comments. We have no resolutions today. Next up, communications.
I, S. D. Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following document was filed in my office, City Treasurers Report Regarding Overall Income on Total Holdings Across All Funds Held at the Treasurer's Office for Year 2023. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that the ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Chicago Second Lean Wastewater Transmission Revenue Bonds Project Refunding Series in 2024, which we passed by the City Council on January 24, 2024, and which was requested to be published in a special pamphlet, was published in a special pamphlet from, form on January 24, 2024. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you very much. Committee reports. Workforce Development, the Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The Committee on Workforce Development held a meeting on Tuesday, January 30th. The Committee considered an ordinance, O2024-0007332, implementing an arbitration option for CPD disciplinary actions in excess of 365 days and separations. A substitute ordinance, SO 2024-0007332, was adopted at the Committee correcting a minor typo. This item received a do not pass recommendation in committee. I was informed that Alderman Yancy and Vice Chair Gutierrez would like to defer and publish this report.
This report will be deferred and published per the request of Alderman Yancy and Alderman Gutierrez.
This ordinance has already been deferred and published once, and under regulations it cannot be deferred second time.
This is a committee report. This is not an ordinance. It's a committee report. It is in order. Thank you very much. I've heard it. It's a committee report. It can be deferred and published. Thank you.
Same ordinance. It's the same ordinance.
Deferral of a committee report is allowed by state law.
This is exactly why we need our own corporation.
Well, thank you, Mr., thank you, Alderman Bill. Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appeal the decision of the Chair.
This is straightforward, a matter of state law. This is unappellable. Thank you very much. Agreed upon calendar... There's a, I didn't make a ruling. The state law makes it very clear, Alderman Lopez, that a committee report can be deferred and published. This rule is unappellable. Thank you. For the agreed upon calendar, matters of other agreed upon calendar, Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Mr. President, I received from the City Clerk, Andrea M. Valencia, a total of one item proposed at agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative and tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia...
Alderwoman Harris. Alderwoman Harris, just a moment, please.
Same ordinance, Jeff, you know that. Same ordinance. Can't defer on something twice. Can't do it. It was deferred.
To our guests, thank you for resettling. One more time, Alderwoman Harris, please.
Thank you. I received from the City Clerk, Andrea M. Valencia, a total of one item proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia from the following Alderperson, Alderperson Robinson. I move passage of this in omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For new business, clerk will call the wards beginning with the 50th ward.
The zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, exemptions from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Almenhadden has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 to disallow additional package goods licenses on portions of Bivon Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almenhadden also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 to disallow additional package goods licenses on portion of North Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Knutson has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 658 West Belden Avenue, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Napolitano has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 11601 West Tuohy Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Nugent has proposed ordinance for the transfer of funds within the 39th Ward Wage Allowance Aldermatic Expense Account for the year 2024, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almen Viejas and Alderman Hopkins have proposed resolution to call for hearings regarding Chicago Police Department's current system of contacting tow truck companies regarding damaged or disabled vehicles on public way, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Almen Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 124 North Sengamon Street, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Mosley has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 221 West 83rd Street, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Coleman has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West 63rd Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And Alderperson Robinson has proposed resolution to call for hearings on establishment and implementation of Chicago Fire Department Affirmative Action Plan in compliance with the, compliance with the collective bargaining agreement, which is referred to a joint committee of the Committee on Workforce Development and the Committee on Police and Fire. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of Aldermatic introductions.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm aware of two pieces of unfinished business. The second piece of unfinished business has been withdrawn. Therefore, the only piece of unfinished business before is filed by Alderman Laspada and calls for a vote on SR 2023-0006422, which was deferred and published on January 24, 2024.
Thank you very much, Alderman Mitchell. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you very much, Chair. Before we vote, I would ask motion of the substitute that's been placed on individuals' desks. The item in your pamphlet is the item that was deferred and published that was voted on in the December Health and Human Relations Committee. The substitute is reflective of feedback from briefings and calls that we've had from colleagues, and I would motion acceptance of the substitute.
There's a motion on the floor to accept the motion of the substitute. There's been a roll call for the substitution that is being presented by Alderman Laspada. So members, you will use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time, and just for clarity, this is a motion to accept the substitute solely by itself... And just for clarity, this is a motion to accept the substitute solely by itself. Is that right? So this is just for consideration of the substitute that is being presented. That is the only thing that you're voting on.
All right, the voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please refresh your e-device. The voting is now open.
Yes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Mr. President, I'm just looking for a clarification. So we just handed a substitute, I don't know, maybe an hour ago, and this is what we're voting on, something we're voting at to accept the substitute of something we're going to be, we're handed an hour ago that we're going to be voting on, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you.
Was there anything else you wanted to add? I'm Laspada.
There we go. There we go. My apologies. It's okay. I have the, one of us has glasses, the other doesn't. No, actually, it was also, to be clear, placed on individuals' desks, also emailed out to all members yesterday.
All right, so it was emailed yesterday and placed on the desk this morning. Thank you very much. The voting is still open. The, okay, you all. Do you have the Alderman Spazado? Respectfully, just check your email, man. I mean, I don't know what time it was emailed. Thank you, Alderwoman Fuentes.
I will now call on those that have not used the e-voting application to vote. Alderman Mitchell. Okay, Alderman Mitchell, you just casted it. Alderwoman Harris. Alderwoman Harris, the yes. Alderwoman Coleman, did you cast it? Okay. Oh, I see it coming through. Alderman Moore, not, oh, Alderman Moore, sorry, you're online. Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman is, Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Scott?
No.
Alderwoman Scott is a no. Alderman Burnett? Not in chambers. Alderwoman Cruz? Alderwoman Cruz is the yes. Alderwoman Mitch? Alderman Spazado?
No.
Alderman Spazado is a no. Okay, all the voting, anyone else that I missed? Okay, the voting is now closed.
There are 30 ayes, 18 nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider the vote.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider?
All those in favor of reconsidering this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
This motion fails. Alderman Mitchell. I'm sorry, thank you very much. Very well. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a matter of order, Alderwoman Ruth Cruz was not granted the opportunity to participate remotely. So if we wish to have her.
Is that a motion? Thank you for that catch. I was wondering, I didn't see her and I heard her voice.
So then I would move to allow her to participate.
Thank you, there's a motion to allow for Alderwoman Cruz to also participate remotely. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
There we go. I mean, before we, I would ask a motion to pass by roll call vote, I do, I expect there's those who would ask to speak, I would ask to speak first to this. Thank you, sir.
Of course.
To that point, I want to say a few things. I want to say such gratitude to the room that we're in. I want to say my thanks to everyone in the gallery. I appreciate the calls for restraint and respectfulness and civility. I cannot imagine how I personally would feel capable of that with what you have witnessed, with how those you love have hurt. You impress me by your courage every single day. I am so grateful. I am so grateful for the work of my colleague, Chairwoman Rosando Rodriguez Sanchez, in this. For your, for your compassion, for your courage, for your consistent leadership, I am forever grateful. And I am as deeply grateful for your accountability for all of us to act and live true to our integrity. And I very much appreciate that. And I want to say my deep thanks.
Alderman Laspada, we're having a tough time hearing you.
Sorry, it's, I have this problem with, turn my head to the side. And I just want to thank my, appreciate it. I appreciate it. And I want to thank my colleagues in the room as well for your being a part of this conversation, for being a part of briefings, for holding really hard and difficult and vulnerable spaces on this. Whether we end up agreeing on this vote or not, I am grateful for your partnership and collaboration, and I mean that very deeply. I will not try to recount all of the horrors that you read in the news. I will not try to do a grim calculus of how many lives are worth, how many lives. I want to say off the bat that still, and truthfully, we condemn the violence that happened on October 7th against the Israeli people. Unspeakable, horrifying violence. That does not, I will say to that that equally, I condemn the violence that has been visited upon the people of Gaza. I cannot imagine it. I deeply and truly cannot imagine it. I read one story yesterday of a woman who had prayed with her husband at Mecca and had asked him to pray that he would live to see his daughter grow up. And he couldn't say that prayer because he didn't believe it could happen. And he is dead now, and he is buried in a mass grave. And if it was only for him, if it was only for him or only for any one of you, I would still cast this vote. But there is so much violence that has been visited. And this ceasefire is the path out of that violence. Do I believe that the words that we speak today, how we vote today, influences directly international policy? I don't. I don't have those illusions, but we vote with hope, we vote with solidarity, we vote to help people feel heard in a world of silence. That is where I come from, and I will only say two more things on this. Number one, that on the back end of this, because there will at some point be a ceasefire, regardless of how we vote today, what happens after that is just as, if not more, critical. Because there have been these sad seeds of future violence already sown. We know as a city, the desperation, that poverty, that trauma are the seeds and precursors of violence. And how we act and how we live and how America chooses to invest in the future of Gaza determines what fruit those seeds bear. To that end, I am grateful again for all of your collaboration and support and for bringing us, if nothing else, to this grateful conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes. Thank you. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein. Thank you very much. Please hold your responses until the end of these presentations. Please respect the body. Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in opposition to this resolution. Today is 116 days since the October 7 terrorist attack. 116 days since 1,200 innocent Israelis were murdered and 240 people were kidnapped. For 116 days, those hostages have been living in hell. 116 days, they have suffered kidnapping, abuse, deprivation, and rape. 116 days, they have been waiting for the world to stand up for them and say their lives matter, that Jewish lives matter too. 116 days is way too long. 28 of us signed a letter saying we wanted to support a ceasefire resolution, but we wanted one that was balanced and didn't weaken Washington. I remain grateful for the support of those 28 alders, and I have been working with this council to propose edits and amendments for the resolution that would be acceptable. However, my comments were ignored, and the resolution you are being asked to consider is not a compromise. We all want peace in the Middle East. We all want an end to the bloodshed and an end to the war. But it is vital to understand what caused the conflict, and we should pass a resolution that addresses the issue responsibly. Hamas has been clear, they want to continue to attack Israel. We should not pass a resolution unless it makes clear that Hamas cannot and should not attack again. This resolution fails to do that. Israel will not and should not agree to a peace that does not require a precondition, the unconditional release of all the innocent hostages, the women, children, and babies who were dragged from their homes and locked underground. This resolution falls short in that regard. The United States military is under attack, and the U.S. service members have died. Our president is working towards creating peace in the region. At this moment, U.S. and Israeli negotiators are in Paris trying to make a deal. The resolution before us seeks to reduce the power of the U.S. government and undermines that effort. This resolution fixates on U.N. Resolution 377, also known as uniting for peace, which happens to be the title of the substitute resolution. This is something the president voted against in December. American troops and assets are being attacked, and you are being asked to weaken Washington's veto power in the United Nations Security Council, a right the U.S. uses to rein in authoritarian governments like Russia, North Korea, and China. Chicago, America's third largest city, should not vote to strip away President Biden's control over U.S. foreign policy, especially not as we are inviting him here for the Democratic National Convention. The Chicago Tribune last week called the Sanchez-Laspada Resolution divisive and a waste of time. It pointed out that it encourages antisemitism at a time when anti-Jewish hate is already up a whopping 360%. The October 7th attack featured a level of barbarity rarely seen in modern society. Terrorists murdered babies, burned homes, and decapitated victims. Those of... I'm not going to speak until there's decorum. Those of you who came to the recent video screening held by the Jewish Federation can attest to how brutal and depraved the attack was. Horrifically, the attack also prominently included gang rape, sexual mutilation, and torture. The video we watched shows many of the young women who were murdered or taken captive. You can see the blood all over their pants as they are paraded through the streets of Gaza, a silent testimony to the rape and torture they went through. The sexual violence is completely absent from Alder's Rodriguez Sanchez and Laspada ceasefire resolution. There's not a single mention of the dozens of raped women, no reference to the brutal depravity that is now seared into the psyche of every Israeli and every Jewish man, woman, and child. This resolution fails to call for Hamas not to attack Israel again. Hamas has fired more than 10,000 rockets into Israel since the war began. They are fired indiscriminately into population centers, and Hamas celebrates every time one strikes a home or harms a civilian. Hamas officials have said that October 7th was just the beginning, and they intend to carry out more terrorist attacks until Israel is entirely destroyed. How does this council accept a resolution that fails to call for Hamas to disarm? How do you support a resolution that allows a terrorist regime to stay in power so that it can continue to attack the world's only Jewish state? A democratic state with a 20% Muslim and Christian population, with full and equal rights and an extraordinary record with regard to the LGBTQ community? This...
This body will stand in recess. The sergeant-at-arms, please clear the room.
Over the dice. Over the dice. This area, this area. Chuck, turn those out.
All right. On your feet.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please exit the room. Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the room. Upper level also. Please exit the room. Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the room. Officers, please... Officers, please assist the people to exit the room. Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the room. That means everybody. Room. Ladies and gentlemen, please exit the room. Please exit the room. Please exit the room. Officers, please assist the patrons to exit the room. Listen, listen, come on, listen, listen. That means everybody, everybody, please exit the room. Please exit the room. Please exit the room.
Log into your e— hi, City Council, if you can hear my voice, please log back into your e-devices. We will start shortly. Thank you.
City Council will come back to order. City Council will come back to order. Thank you, Alderwoman Silverstein, please continue. Is that okay? Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thanks for what you did. I know your hand was forced. I know you didn't want to do that, but I commend you for doing what you had to do. And secondly, I would request that we give my colleague the opportunity to start from the beginning again because she was very disruptive. So I appreciate if it's okay with you and it's okay with her to start all over.
There is a motion on the floor for Alderwoman Silverstein to be able to start over her testimony. There was a second. I don't, I don't know. Do you want to start over?
Yes, I would like to start over.
Okay, well, please. You're welcome.
Thank you. As I said before, I am opposed to this resolution. Today is 116 days since the October 7 terrorist attack. 116 days since 1,200 innocent Israelis were murdered and 240 people were kidnapped. For 116 days, the hostages have been living in hell. 116 days, they have suffered kidnapping, abuse, deprivation, and rape. 116 days, they have been waiting for the world to stand up for them and to say their lives matter, that Jewish lives matter too. 116 days is way too long. 28 of us signed a letter saying we wanted to support a ceasefire resolution, but we wanted one that was balanced and didn't weaken Washington. I remain grateful for the support of those 28 alders, and I have been working with this council to propose edits and amendments to the resolution that would be acceptable. However, my comments were ignored, and the resolution you're being asked to consider is not a compromise. We all want peace in the Middle East. We all want an end to the bloodshed and an end to the war, but it is vital to understand what caused the conflict, and we should pass a resolution that addresses the issues responsibly. Hamas has been clear, they want to continue to attack Israel. We should not pass a resolution unless it makes clear that Hamas cannot and should not attack again. This resolution does not do that. Israel will not and should not agree to a peace that does not require as a precondition the unconditional release of all the innocent hostages, the women, children, and babies who were dragged from their homes and locked underground. This resolution falls short in that regard. The United States military is under attack, and US service members have died. Our president is working towards creating peace in the region. At this moment, US and Israeli negotiators are in Paris trying to make a deal. The resolution before us seeks to reduce the power of the US government and undermines that effort. This resolution fixates on UN Resolution 377, also known as Uniting for Peace, which is the title of the resolution, the substitute resolution that's before you. This is something the president voted against in December. American troops and assets are being attacked, and you are being asked to weaken Washington's veto power in the United Nations Security Council, a right the US uses to rein in authoritarian governments like Russia, North Korea, and China. Chicago, America's third-largest city, should not vote to strip away President Biden's control over US foreign policy, especially not as we are inviting him here for the Democratic National Convention. The Chicago Tribune last week called the Sanchez-Las Pata Resolution divisive and a waste of time. It pointed out that it encourages antisemitism at a time when anti-Jewish hate is already a whopping 360%. The October 7th attack featured a level of barbarity rarely seen in modern society. Terrorists murdered babies, burned homes, and decapitated victims. Those of you who came to the recent video screening held by the Jewish Federation can attest to how brutal and depraved the attack was. Horrifically, the attack also prominently included gang rape, sexual mutilation, and torture. The video we watched shows many of the young women who were murdered or taken captive. You can see the blood all over their pants as they are paraded through the streets of Gaza, a silent testimony to the rape and torture they went through. This sexual violence is completely absent from Alders Rodriguez Sanchez and Las Pata ceasefire resolution. There is not a single mention of the dozens of raped women, no reference to the brutal depravity that is now seared in the psyche of every Israeli and every Jewish man, woman, and child. This resolution fails to call Hamas not to attack Israel again. Hamas has fired more than 10,000 rockets into Israel since the war began. They are fired indiscriminately into population centers, and Hamas celebrates every time one strikes a home or harms a civilian. Hamas officials have said that October 7th was just the beginning, and they intend to carry out more terrorist attacks until Israel is entirely destroyed. How does this council accept a resolution that fails to call for Hamas to disarm? How do you support a resolution that allows a terrorist regime to stay in power so it can continue to attack the world's only Jewish state, a democratic state with a 20% Muslim and Christian population with full and equal rights and an extraordinary record with regard to the LGBTQ community? This resolution also fails to acknowledge any of Hamas's culpability in the deaths of innocent Palestinians. Hamas embedded its terrorist infrastructure around Gaza's civilian population. It builds tunnels under hospitals and fires rockets from mosques. Hamas uses the Gazan people as human shields, but this resolution does not call for them to stop doing that. Anti-Jewish hate is at an all-time high. The Anti-Defamation League tracked more antisemitic incidents in the three months since October 7th than it does in most 12-month periods. One-sided, biased resolutions like this one are part of the reason why hate against Jews is spiking. When people are free, are given free rein to bash Israel in the Human Relations Committee or in the middle of Dosaboe Lake Shore Drive, it puts Jewish lives at risk. It creates an atmosphere where Jewish blood is cheap. And on a personal note, I just want to add my disappointment and frustration with the administration's handling of this vote. We all want what's best for the city. I don't understand why there was so much personal political capital put behind this when 28 alders asked for collaboration, and there was absolutely no collaboration from the other side. We had, and we continue to have, opportunity to craft a resolution that could have gained unanimous support, and instead, we once again have a deeply divided council. As the Chicago Tribune editorial board pointed out when opposing this resolution, "You need to speak on behalf of our entire city, Mr. Mayor. It's time to work on unifying the city instead of dividing it. We could have used you as a unifier here, too." To my colleagues, I urge you all to vote against this biased, one-sided resolution, and I pledge to you that I will continue to work in good faith towards a fair, responsible resolution we can all support. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and my colleagues, and I'll be brief. I have to run to an event in the ward, but I want to thank my colleague Deborah Silverstein for all her work on this and the numerous compromises she put forward to improve the language that would have gotten us to a unanimous resolution. I'd like to read some of the things that were not accepted by the sponsors. It's "two whereas clauses and three be it resolved." Whereas, "The City of Chicago calls for all hostages to be released immediately and without conditions" was not included. Whereas, "The Chicago City Council desires a situation where Hamas, an internationally-recognized terror organization that does not represent all Palestinians, is denied the ability to continue to attack Israelis and put Palestinian civilians in harm's way." The three "be it resolved" were those two items, and "The City Council calls on the world to aid in the rebuilding of parts of Israel and Gaza that were destroyed or damaged starting on October 7th and prevent any interference by the parties seeking to prolong the conflict." I guess I would like an explanation about what is so damaging about those three whereas clauses. It would have been nice to get to something that all of our communities can support, but without condemning Hamas or condemning their ability to attack Israel in the future, I cannot support this. I was in a briefing yesterday with one of my colleagues who mentioned, "Well, what should we be doing here?" I think it's pretty clear we have a responsibility to keep our residents safe, and we've neglected that by debating this and dragging this out the way we have. We have a responsibility to keep our Jewish residents, our Palestinian residents, our Arab residents, Latino residents, Asian residents safe, and we're not seeing that. Our Committee on Health and Human Relations isn't talking about hate incidents and working together to de-escalate, or what we can do to come together as a city, or even approving our Public Health Commissioner. And those are the things that we have under our control. Those are the things that we are responsible for. And after today, I would ask my colleagues that we refocus on those things that we can do to help heal our city and keep our city safe. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes...
I have to leave for a meeting in the ward. If I could be attending remotely under provisions of Rule 59, I would appreciate it.
I think you have to be remote first, and then we can approve it. And I'm sure Alderman Lopez will be eager to make sure that you are able to participate remotely. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've said to a lot of my colleagues from the beginning that I wanted to be a yes on a resolution calling for a ceasefire, and I've been working in good faith to this end. I thank my colleagues for working with me on the changes to the resolution as we navigate this unfolding humanitarian crisis. Some of the changes that I requested are reflected in this language; others, unfortunately, are not. But I've decided to vote yes today, despite not being aligned... Despite not being aligned with 100% of the words on this page, because I believe that we must send a message that we stand for peace. I know some people here who I respect greatly, including Alderwoman Silverstein, who I consider my friend, will be disappointed with my decision. To those that have reached out to me to ask me to vote no, I want you to know that I've heard you, and I share your alarm at the rising antisemitism that we've seen not only in this city but across the country. I also share your disgust with Hamas's brutal attacks. Alderman Silverstein invited me to watch a video of compiled raw footage from October 7th. I accepted the invitation to bear witness to the Hamas atrocities. I've never seen hate like that before in my life. The footage was harrowing, and it's going to stay with me for the rest of my days. If I lost loved ones that way, I would want justice too. The questions that I could not stop asking myself during the viewing and still preoccupy my thoughts are, "How will this end? How do we interrupt this cycle of violence and enter a path forward towards sustainable and just peace in this region, so that nothing like this ever happens again, so that Jews all over the world can be safe and protected once and for all?" I believe that a durable peace begins with a ceasefire and must lead toward a solution that removes Hamas from power and ensures true self-determination for Palestinians and true security for Israelis. For much of my 15-year career at United Airlines before I took this job, I led global humanitarian aid and disaster response work. I arranged for flights to help migrants when they were released from detention and reunited with their children at the US-Mexico border cities, and I got them to places where they would look to rebuild their lives. I did the same resettlement work for Afghan families escaping violence and repression to resettle in the United States. When I watch the news and see children being pulled from rubble and lack the aid that's adequate to take care of them, my instinct is to help. I've heard many say, "Why are we getting involved in this issue?" And I've asked myself the same thing. We're just aldermen, yes. As aldermen, our influence is limited, but our voices aren't insignificant. Every voice, in fact, matters. It's one of the things we used to say at United in the work that I did, "Every action counts." An overwhelming number of my constituents have approached me about this issue, desperately wanting a ceasefire, and as the Alderwoman of the 11th Ward, it's my duty to represent them on the floor of the City Council. The fact is that the November ceasefire was the only context with which we've seen Israeli hostages freed en masse, and it can be done again. We want all, we want to see all of the remaining hostages freed, and we have to, and we have a model by which this can be accomplished. We should listen to the pleas of the many loved ones of Israeli hostages who are crying for the Israeli government to focus on doing what it takes to bring their relatives to safety immediately. And I hope that everyone who's in the best position to negotiate for a ceasefire in the Middle East are able to arrive at one immediately, because we need the violence to end. In Chicago, we're seeing a frightening rise in both antisemitism and Islamophobia. Children at a Jewish school in Chicago had to be evacuated because of a bomb threat, a bomb threat at a school. Muslim and Palestinian residents at universities are being doxxed, and I did have to find out what doxxed meant, by the way. I am that old. As long as the extreme violence towards civilians continues, I fear that this rise in hate is going to continue to escalate, and we as leaders have an obligation to stand up and speak out and be a model for everyone else. We need to unite for peace. A call for a ceasefire should be something that is unifying, not something that further divides people. There's a lot of healing that needs to be done, and my vote for this resolution is a vote for the beginning of that very process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to share the following statement, signed by 23 aldermen, including myself. "We are all saddened by the ongoing conflict in the Middle East. We condemn all acts of violence aimed at Palestinian and Israeli civilians, including all acts of terrorism, as well as all acts of provocation, incitement, and destruction. We remain committed to working toward sustained and permanent peace. We believe that the United States is the best peace broker in the conflict, and we support US foreign policy as the best way forward toward a true and lasting peace. We should all be incredibly concerned that the Chicago City Council is contemplating supporting United Nations Resolution 377, also known as Uniting for Peace, the same resolution the United States voted against in December of 2023. Resolution 377 was the United Nations General Assembly's attempts to override a US veto on a Security Council resolution. It weakens the United States' influence on the international stage and directly contradicts the White House's position on foreign policy. Passing a resolution that is counter to US international policy and norms sends a dangerous message. It undermines the interests of the United States and hence the authority, the power, and the influence of President Biden. This is particularly irresponsible, as three American service members were killed in an attack on a base in northeast Jordan on Sunday. Further, as we contemplate the resolution before us, reports are circulating that a potential ceasefire is being negotiated by the United States in Qatar. This resolution serves only to undermine those efforts. Voting no on this resolution is not synonymous with supporting violence. It seeks to find a true path towards peace. We need to address the violence here in Chicago where we actually have jurisdiction. Our communities are begging for us to focus on public safety and education and ensure Chicago remains the vibrant, world-class city that we are all proud to call home. We owe it to everyone." This statement is signed by Alderman Brian Hopkins, Alderperson Gregory Mitchell, Alderperson Michelle Harris, Alderperson Anthony Beal, Alderperson Peter Chico, Alderperson Marty Quinn, Alderperson Raymond Lopez, Alderperson Derek Curtis, Alderperson Matt O'Shea, Alderperson Silvana Tabarez, Alderperson Monique Scott, Alderperson Jason Irvin, Alderperson Felix Cardona, Alderperson Scott Wagasback, Alderperson Bill Conway, Alderperson Gil Villegas, Alderperson Nick Spazado, myself, Alderman Sam Nugent, Alderperson Anthony Napolitano, Alderperson Brendan Riley, Alderperson Timmy Knutson, Alderperson Bennett Lawson, and Alderperson Deborah Silverstein. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sigchel Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first, let me thank Alderman Las Pata and Alderwoman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez for all the efforts to reach a compromise that includes the voices, not only of council members, but the voices of all residents. I do think that, and I echo some of the comments about our responsibility for the safety of all our constituents. So I remind us that we have the largest Palestinian community in the country here in Chicago, and we do also have a responsibility, equally important, to preserve their safety. I am extremely proud of our Chicago Public Schools youth and our students for seeing the obvious, for seeing what's right, for practice what they're hearing and learning. And this is, of course, a resolution that is not controversial. I mean, I think some of the arguments here on the floor defy some logic when we're talking about a resolution that does three simple things. Number one, a ceasefire, and I think that is not a controversial position. In fact, as one of my colleagues just said, there are already efforts on the way to reach a ceasefire. The council is actually acting upon our responsibility with our Palestinian constituents so that this ceasefire happens expeditiously, as we're almost in the fourth month of a brutal war slaughter and what the international courts are investigating as genocide. So when we talk about the importance of being factual, I will also encourage our media reporters, right, because I think we have heard and seen some, and I just want to make sure for facts, because it's important that we speak with facts. There's been some articles by the New York Times that have been distributed. These are allegations presented to us as facts, and those facts are important because with those allegations, even humanitarian aid has been conditioned in a time where we have 70% of Gazans, almost 2 million people who are affected, 70% of the population by famine, they're talking about starvation. We need to make sure that we reach humanitarian aid, and when we question institutions even like the United Nations, I think we wonder here, if we're talking about a resolution or we keep moving the polls as we see suffering happen in front of us. So I want to challenge our media, and I think there's a call, and I want to be very public about this, because these articles were presented, and I think that the concerns and the people uncomfortable in the audience, when articles are presented as facts, in fact, there's a call by the gray zone about answering some of the questions about journalistic malpractice of the New York Times. So it's important because we cannot condition humanitarian aid based on allegations. We need the facts, and I think that's what is important. This resolution, and I think it's overwhelmingly supportive for our constituents, comes to make sure that we talk about humanitarian aid. And finally, and I think, I think there's some really misconstruction here about saying that we are not talking about the hostages. This resolution also talks about liberating all hostages, as many families in Israel are asking. So this is not a controversial resolution. In fact, this is an urgent call for our federal government to look at the issues locally that we're being dismissing, as we are in this web of misinformation and propaganda presented as evidence. I urge your colleagues, right, and I think that's what I want to not only echo our young people in CPS, but are very grateful for the presence of Reverend Jesse Jackson today in support of this resolution, as well as the many faith and leaders in our community who are worried about hate crimes escalating in our communities, antisemitism, Islamophobia, the anti-other, the rise of white supremacy, as we'll be pitching against each other. Today, we have an opportunity to work on a resolution that will encourage President Biden to actually fulfill the commitment to reach a ceasefire. Something has already worked out. This is not a controversial resolution. Let me be clear. And I think that I would like to end with this, because many of us profess, right, or beliefs, for one, sometimes think our beliefs must meet our actions. So I will, I will just like to share a very important quote because I like how young people are talking about this, and I think that they're using our values or principles. And I would like to refer to Matthew 25, 35 to 40. "For I was hungry and you gave me food. I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger and you welcomed me. I was naked and you gave me clothing. I was sick and you took me care. And I was in prison and you visited me." Then the righteous will answer him, "Lord, when it will be that we saw you hungry and gave you food, or thirsty and gave you something to drink? And it was we saw a stranger and welcomed you, or naked, and gave you clothing? And when I was sad and saw you sick and in prison, or visited you? And Jesus answered them, "I truly tell you, just as you did to me, of the least of, you did on the least of these who are members of my family, you did to me." So today, I urge my colleagues, many of us are parents, many of us are community residents. We all, and I think we all want peace, as we said, but how can we want peace and be against ceasefire? There are fundamental contradictions that I think is important that we, as representatives of our community, don't allow. I'm grateful for Alderperson Lee, because we know what hate crime looks in our community, and we cannot allow this to take over, especially with events coming up. So I urge all our colleagues to look at the facts, to look at our values, and to vote for a resolution, a diplomatic resolution, that don't put funding in front of others before our own communities. So we are representing the best interests of our constituents, but working on a resolution that will actually encourage our president to act upon what has been promised. A ceasefire is critical in that I am proud because I know that the City of Chicago will vote and make history. As James Baldwin will say, "All children are all ours." In our community, we're a tight community. All our residents deserve safety and respect. So today, we have an opportunity to do just that, and I'm really proud of this administration for having a democratic dialogue, which will, is going to take to address historic conflicts that did not start on October 7th. And to get to that, we need a ceasefire, we need diplomacy, and we need a government that works for us and not for other interests. So I urge my colleagues to please support the resolution and start working on our local issues, understanding the implications when we see this suffering brutality play in front of us. Let's not make a mistake. Terrorism in these spreads, and today we say, "No more." We have a time to call for a resolution that will help us to reach peace and stability in our communities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes... The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by saying, we all were elected to make a difference in our communities and represent the interests of our constituents. And today, we'll probably hear more about all of the things that we should be doing other than this. I feel confident in the work that I do in my ward every day, the doors I knock on, the relationships I build with constituents, and the policies that... relationships I build with constituents, and the policies that I elevate and ask you to vote on that's going to build a safer Chicago. You see, we could do both. And I'm confident that after today's vote, we will still do both. I also want to talk a little bit about how our lived experiences determine on what side of the issue we stand on, and how that makes up our ideological framework and our politics. So I want to talk about my lived experience and why it informs my unapologetic stance in supporting today's resolution. I am a daughter of the Caribbean. I am Puerto Rican and Cuban. I am culturally Puerto Rican, raised by a phenomenal woman. Her name is Ada Fuentes. My grandmother left Puerto Rico in 1950 because of the colonial reality and experience that didn't allow her to stay on the beloved island that she loved. Grandmother was also a victim of Operation Bootstrap, La Operación, sorry, where she was forced to no longer have children as a form of population control in Puerto Rico, where global gentrification has displaced Puerto Ricans from their own island, where more Puerto Ricans live in the U.S. than on the island because they can no longer afford to live there. My first national political act was to go to Vieques to demand that the Navy stop bombing the very land that Puerto Ricans lived on, a place that has the highest rates of cancer today because of the testing of those bombs on our land. That colonial experience, that fight for freedom and self-determination, the desire to just want to be able to live in a place that we love so much without being displaced is what informs my solidarity with Palestinians. And so I want to say that to say that we all have lived experiences, right? And we should all be able to be in a place where we respect one another, where we lead with love and care and expect the best from one another, even when we disagree. There is no disagreement here that on October 7th was a horrendous day. 1,200 people, innocent people, had their lives taken. 240 hostages were taken. There is no argument here that we should condemn the acts of Hamas. I'm not someone that believes an eye for an eye. I'm not someone that believes that we should continue mass murder and genocide in the name of justice. I'm also a restorative justice practitioner, so you can understand why calling for peace is something that I feel extremely passionate about. I also want to humanize our movement, because they have been demonized in this process. We have organizers, leaders, and super brave young people that practiced their democratic right to protest yesterday and today. These are young people and organizers who are feeling an immense amount of pain. Every time they turn on the TV or have to listen to the radio about maybe loved ones being at risk, or having already been lost, or institutions, hospitals, mosques, being bombed. These are individuals that are articulating their pain in the most democratic way possible. And so I want to elevate the work of all organizers, our leaders, and particularly our young people. I also want to talk a little bit about why it's important for us to take a stance today. Illinois has the largest Palestinian population in the U.S. And we are also the fifth-largest state to have a Jewish population in the world. Fighting Islamic, anti-Muslim, and antisemitism is the very fabric of this city. Standing for this resolution doesn't make us antisemitic. In fact, we are saying that we value life, and that ceasefire is absolutely necessary in a moment in which we are watching too many innocent civilian lives be taken, more than half of being Palestinian children. The question today is, do we value human life? Do we value children? Do we value caring for those who are injured and ill? If the answer to those questions is yes, then voting yes for today's resolution should not be a difficult one. I know that folks have some concerns about the way this resolution was drafted and the nuances, whether we agree or do not agree on the very detail that is articulated here. The purpose of today is to let our Palestinian constituency, our siblings, know that Chicago stands with them, that they matter, that we acknowledge their grief and their pain, that our Jewish community knows that they matter, that we value their grief and their pain. We are a city of 77 neighborhoods. It's what makes us so beautiful. We quite literally have a world in the city. And today, we want to let that world know that we value their life. And so today, I will vote yes for this resolution, knowing that this resolution demands for humanitarian aid after a ceasefire is in place, that that humanitarian aid reaches Gaza, West Bank, Israel, and the broader region. That is what we are asking for. And so I ask my colleagues to think about those lived experiences, to think about your constituency, to think about the people who are in immense pain today, and how they have exercised their right to articulate that pain. And they are asking us, they have demanded of us to stand with them. And so I will vote yes, and I hope that every colleague in this room does as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Alder Lawson has logged in. Is there a motion to allow for Alder Lawson to be included in remote participation? Sure. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. In accordance with Rule 59, I move to allow Aldermans Lawson, Tabarez, and Coleman, who have all applied for remote access, to have participation in this meeting.
What are, what are those names again?
Coleman, Tabarez, and Lawson.
All right, very good. All those in favor and allowing for remote participation for those three Alders signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. Clerk, please make sure that the quorum recognizes that those individuals will be added as remote participants. Chair recognizes Alder Will Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I stand on behalf of the 26,000 who've been killed, in particular, 86 of which, 8,600 of which who are children, close to 7,000 who are women, and 8,000 who are missing. I stand on behalf of the 240 hostages and 1,200 who have been killed as well. I stand on behalf of those in the sixth ward who have family members connected to Palestine, as well as those in the sixth ward who've contributed to the wellness of our ward. I stand on behalf of a colleague, as well as Rewada, who's 20 years here in our country, works so diligently in IGA, and yet cannot go back home to Palestine where she comes from because she doesn't have access like everyone else. I stand because the Bible teaches me that blessed are the peacemakers, for they should be called children of God. Dropping bombs is not what children of God do. Kidnapping innocent lives and not returning them home is not what children of God do. Taking away water and food and basic needs is not what children of God do. Ignoring the pain of those who are crying out for help is not what children of God do. Erasing the history of the oppressed is not what children of God do. We use his name and his image so much, especially last week, but Dr. King once said, "An eye for an eye leaves us all blind." Are we so blind, as a country, in a city, that we do not see the value of human life? Are we so blind that just last week, two kids went to school and did not come back home because they were gunned down leaving school? Are we so blind that we cannot see that hate is destroying our city one block at a time and trying to take our nation back too? And so I ask us today, that in the words of Reverend Jackson, that we do stop the violence, and that we save our children, that we stop the violence and save children in Palestine, children in Chicago, and we stop the violence that's tearing across our world. Thank you, Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Alder Knutson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to everyone who's spoken today. I'm going to go ahead and read a statement that I released this morning on Medium, just to get it out there in the open and verbally. "About a decade ago, I spent several months between Israel and the West Bank. I did so with the privilege of being able to cross borders as a white, Christian man with an American passport who is not yet publicly out or presenting his LGBTQ+. This experience rewrote my worldview and solidified the belief that conflict resolution of any kind can only begin with dialogue and an attempt to understand the party on the other side of the negotiation table. While there, I was overwhelmed by experiences of kindness from Christians, Muslims, and Jews on both sides of the separation wall and with many different points of view. Striking up conversations everywhere I went, be it in a coffee shop in Ramallah, an art gallery in Bethlehem, or a shared taxi in Jerusalem, I found that there was a desire from both Israelis and Palestinians to have their struggles understood. My journal entries from the time summarize consistent interactions of strangers sharing their personal stories, stating a relentless hope for a better future, and often expressing empathy towards the other, based on memories and stories of times of shared life between Israelis and Arabs. Like many Chicagoans, I feel gutted by the murder and kidnapping committed by Hamas on October 7th, an act of terror against Israel which should be universally condemned. As it would with any nation, this atrocity and the mission to bring the hostages, and the mission to bring the hostages home warranted a measured military response by Israel. Since then, I have been equally gutted by Israel's ongoing response in Gaza, which has killed more than 25,000 Palestinians. I mourn for all innocent civilians lost in this conflict and for the large Palestinian and Jewish communities impacted in Chicago and worldwide. To achieve a durable peace that ensures long-term security for everyone involved, a two-state solution should be advanced by direct negotiations following international law. World powers should lead the implementation of a plan to end Hamas's terrorist infrastructure, grant Palestinians the human right to self-determination that they have lacked for decades, and release all remaining hostages. The time is now, and I adamantly disagree with those who say that this negotiation is not possible. For years, Israel's Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu has set the path towards peace backwards. He has opposed a two-state solution, he has expanded settlements into the Palestinian territories through home demolitions, and he's controlled water and travel within the Palestinian territories. We won't reach a lasting peace in the region with Netanyahu as a broker. The international community must lead negotiations. Alders are elected to focus on local public safety, snow cleanup, infrastructure, balancing the city budget, and to make people feel engaged and connected locally. The ceasefire resolution that the city council will vote on this today has become a flashpoint for division that does not reflect all of the opinions I reflect above. Accordingly, I will be voting no on this language as it presents a false choice and fails to promote unity for Chicagoans. In recent months in city council chambers, I have heard derogatory slurs from the public that cover the gamut from antisemitism to Islamophobia, racism, xenophobia, and homophobia. In the 43rd Ward, we've locally responded to numerous incidents of antisemitism, such as hate language and graffiti in our parks and on our neighbors' homes. While I know that this resolution did not cause these incidents, I also know that the way in which these conversations have continued to be conducted have left many feeling unsafe and alienated. It is our job to work to support all people in our communities in a way that makes them feel supported and not pitted against one another. Much as the fates of Chicagoan are bound together, I'm convinced from my own personal experience that the futures of Israelis and Palestinians are inextricably linked. One will only succeed, as does the other. While zero-sum discourse may smother us all on social media and in news headlines, we must remain steadfast in the belief that a joint path to peace is both possible and necessary. I expect and know that many people will find parts of this statement that they agree with and parts that they disagree with. To me, that is the complexity of being human, and I pray that this conflict's negotiators stay at the table when they are faced with a parallel dilemma. During times of division and challenges, I've been proud to see Chicagoans come together. Whether it relates to this conflict worldwide or issues local to Chicago, we can choose to lead with empathy for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Mr. President. And once again, thanks for doing what you had to do. I know it was an uncomfortable thing, but you had to do it. So just want to start by saying, I really appreciate the civility so far. And pretty much every speech so far was a good speech, whether I agree with your position or not. So with that, I'm going to start off by just, I didn't write an elegant speech like a lot of other people did. I've just been taking notes of not forgetting things to say, so I'm just going to be babbling off a bunch of bullet points. So here we go. I just want to write, remind everybody, contrary to what some people have said, there was a ceasefire on October 7th, okay? That ceasefire was violated by Hamas. Not Palestine, Hamas. I feel the Palestinian, the poor Palestinians are living under a thumb, a thumb, like, under a, under a, I don't know what to say, but they're living under, with Hamas in Palestine. So I believe everybody in this council know how, no matter how divided we are, believe me, this divided us even more than we are divided, unfortunately. But no, everybody in this council wants peace. Nobody wants war. We have a war going on in our city right now, and it just tears away at all of us. So I just ring that. I don't think us passing a resolution is going to change the mind of Netanyahu or Ismail Hannah Yaya, whatever his name is, the leader of Hamas. So they're not waiting for us to say, hey, tell us to stop the fighting, and we're going to stop. That's just not going to happen. Secondly, or not second, yeah, I guess, secondly, I mean, okay, here it is, just handed a resolution at 10:30. Yes, I was emailed it at 5:30 last night, 5:36 actually. I didn't see it. I'm sorry. I have a busy life. Things have been crazy. I guess maybe I should just check my emails every five minutes, though. I guess, shame on me for not checking my emails every five minutes. So just handed this basically hours ago. We need to release the hostages, people. I mean, that's an important thing. I mean, you know, say what you want. Unfortunately, I don't believe there's any hostages left. It's a terrible thing to say, I don't know, after seeing the tear, what happened to these people, after this video we watched, and every one of us that watched it, this video will stick in our, in our minds the rest of our lives. It was horrific. Unfortunately, I wanted some of my good friends to watch it, but they kept avoiding me and ducking me and wouldn't watch it. So I don't know. That's an unfortunate thing. And it's also, two of my best friends in this council are on the opposite side of me. So this is, this is a bad thing, more division amongst the council. And I'm not saying that me and my, two of my best friends here are not going to be friends anymore, but it's just an unfortunate thing. War is a terrible thing that's going on all over the world. We have it in Eastern Europe, we have it in Africa. Once again, we have war in this city, and many of people have said that already. I heard some people bragging about how great it was, the students with their protesting. You know what? Not a single one of you, and not a single one of the media over there reported, you are proudly reported about students protesting. You didn't say a damn word about racist comments chanting and antisemitic chants that they did. Not a one of you, not one channel, not one radio station, not one piece of paper. Shame on you for that. Okay? I heard from some people in my arguments with them, a resident called me, unfortunately got in a little argument with a young student out there when we left yesterday, they were blocking the street, they were laying in the streets. blocking the street, they were laying in the streets. One person told me it's all AI, and another person asked me if I was there to see the terror that happened in Israel, so. I did watch the video, so I don't believe it was AI, I wasn't there, it was a terrible thing. I know a lot of people don't want to make this vote, and if any of you walk out on this, I don't blame you, I'm not going to hold it against you, I know it's a tough thing. Hamas is not only threatening Israel, people, they're threatening America. Their one goal in life is to wipe out Israel and to wipe out America. That's not AI, they're saying it all the time. They're bragging about killing Jews. When we saw that video, some of you that saw it, you had a guy, a young man, I'm assuming he was in his twenties, bragging, calling his mother, calling his mother, can any of you imagine calling your mother and bragging that you killed 10 people with your bare hands? "I'm a hero, Mom, I killed 10 people with my bare hands." Just unbelievable. And don't forget, Hamas is at the top of our terror list over here. You know, they're not our friends, they don't like us. Once again, heard from many of my constituents, many of them asked me not to support this, many of them did it, some asked me to support it, many asked me not to support it. So we're at threats right now, people. Maybe not some of you that are supporting this, but people like Napolitano, or Nugent, or myself, that are against this. I called the 16th District today, asked them to put a squad at my office because of the threat, so. Got in a little beef with a young guy here today. You know, I know none of you are for that, none of you are saying this is what this was about, you want to see people marching on my office threatening me or the girls in my office, so. But it's about it, just want to remind everybody what's going on. Once again, I appreciate the civility, I was hoping more people would be talking. I know a lot of people feel they're in awkward positions, but appreciate the opportunity to speak, Mr. President, and thank you very much, everybody, everybody, even the ones I don't agree with. Just thank you so much for the civility about your comments, and it's some good discussion, but unfortunately, I know where the vote's going, Deb, you know where the vote's going. We got outworked, so they beat us.
Oh, really?
It's going to pass.
Yeah, I know, I found a little spot.
All right, I know you're with us, Bennett, but unfortunately, we're going to lose, so. But with that, thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Please remind our members who are participating remotely to remain muted until you are, or unless you are acknowledged. The Chair recognizes Alderman Desmond Yancy.
Reverend Martin Luther King, whose birth we celebrated just a couple short weeks ago, once said that injustice anywhere is injustice anywhere. And that's why I stand in support of this resolution. I stand because I stand for peace. I want to be clear, though, my heart grieves for all the people, both Israel and Palestine, as they are all suffering an imaginable grief as this armed conflict is raged on for generations. This resolution, however, like much of our work in this body, is both well-intentioned and imperfect, but we shouldn't allow our pursuit of perfection to outweigh our support for peace in the region. And while this resolution before us is the product of thoughts and concerns of many of my colleagues, all of whom are concerned about the violence 6,000 miles away, just last week, less than six blocks from here, two children were murdered in broad daylight, just steps away from their school. Two weeks ago, a two-year-old was shot and killed in Roslyn, and just two days ago, another teen was injured in a shooting in Washington Park. I wish there was as much concern for the victims and survivors of senseless violence in our city as there is for senseless violence in and around Gaza. I also wish there were similar concern for the dozens of missing Black women and girls declared missing on the South and West Sides. In fact, the sense of urgency to address the atrocities in Gaza would have been more appreciated if there was a real sense of urgency to ease the suffering on the South and West Sides of this city. And to my colleagues, evaluate the time and energy and effort that was put together as they worked to create a resolution for peace in the Middle East. However, I've heard from Chicago residents who would have appreciated a similar effort to address the plight of citizens of this city. Ralph Bunch, recipient of the Nobel Peace Prize in 1950 for his work mediating the conflict between Israel and Palestine, spoke of the qualities that mediators should possess. And he said, "They should be biased against war and for peace. They should have a bias which would lead them to believe in the essential goodness of their fellow man, and that no problem of human relations is unsolvable. They should be biased against suspicion, intolerance, hate, religious, and racial bigotry." Members of this body are asking us to mediate today's conflict in the Middle East, and I pray that after today's vote, we're able to walk together, work together, and focus on providing solutions for other pressing issues, like rising violence, the effects of disinvestment in the Black community, and begin to close the book on the tale of two cities in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott Wagisback.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank all my colleagues for all their comments so far and those to come. I've thought long and hard about this as well. I've worked in some of those conflict zones as well, and the trauma that this conflict has created really has implications for generations to come, not just in Gaza and Israel, but throughout Chicagoland. But I'm voting no today because of the divisive process that I was worried was disrespectful to some of the members of those communities, but also with the disrespect among colleagues. And that is where I think we've reached the height and the change that we need to see within this body to get back to a time when we negotiated fairly, openly, without that divisive behavior that I think has tainted a lot of this process as we got to this point today. It's been very unfortunate to see, and I hope that we can get back to a day when we speak with respect to each other and not with the toxicity that has really gone too far in this body. I want to be clear that I think we do need a push for a negotiated peace that yields the release of all hostages, and that creates a situation where we see the medical aid, the food, the resources that the people of Gaza need, including clean water, every day, and address all the humanitarian disaster that has happened in Gaza, and again, put an end to the bombing, as we stated earlier. Here at home, I know a lot of us have seen an influx of Islamophobia and antisemitism that is unacceptable. The stuff that is going up on taggings throughout our neighborhoods, in front of Jewish schools, in front of mosques, and it's not one against the other, it's the right wing that comes in and says stuff, far-right organizations that post up Nazi slogans, all built up because of this fervor around Gaza and what's happening here at home as well. So many people in Chicago have been personally affected by this crisis, Jewish Chicagoans with relatives in Israel, friends or family who were taken hostage on October 7th, but also Palestinian families here in the United States with friends and families there in Gaza and throughout the region. So we must remember throughout this, whether we vote yes or no, that this does have an impact on all sides. What I want to see is an end to violence in the Middle East, but that again has to happen from somebody higher up than us. What we need here in Chicago is a focus, as a couple of my colleagues have already stated, on the crimes that seem unacceptable but have not been addressed. Five-year-olds dying in shelters, young men just a couple blocks from here being gunned down in broad daylight. What is our response to that? Ladies and gentlemen, we want a city where people should be able to speak freely like today, and a city that remains a safe place for all of our cultures that come to the city and look for that safety that they might not have in their own country. I want to hear the diversity of viewpoints, and I want to hear from each one of you. But we have to do it with the sense that we can speak freely and not be criticized, not be ridiculed for the positions that we take. Say your piece on the facts and move on, and vote as you wish. I wish to vote no respectfully, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the City Council. I rise in opposition to this resolution for all of the reasons many of my colleagues have already mentioned, but there are a few reasons that I find this attempt at us engaging in international affairs both misguided and intentionally excluding the facts that are As we try to pretend that we are international diplomats in this room, referring to various UN charters, things of that nature, it's amazing to me that this body can single-handedly skip one of the other most fundamental international treaties known as the Geneva Convention. The Geneva Convention passed 75 years ago says quite clearly the prohibition against the taking of hostages. The prohibition against violence to life in persons that includes mutilation, cruel treatment, and torture. These are things that are not inconsequential. These are things that are part of civilized life for the past seven and a half decades. And yet here we are today, acting as though all of that that has transpired in the last 116 days is inconsequential to this topic. We are talking about how do we bring peace to an area where there was a ceasefire, where there was calm, and telling those that are giving their response to a terrorist attack that they are the ones that are in the wrong, that they are the ones who have to stop firing. Golda Meir once said, "You cannot negotiate peace with someone who has come to kill you." That is exactly what happened on October 7th, when Hamas terrorists came to Israel to kill them, to take their children, to do unexplainable and unacceptable crimes to people who were otherwise going about their day. The irony, Mr. President, as I've heard today, we talk about fundamental contradictions, is that there's no call for ceasefire on any of the other nearly dozen conflicts in the world at present. Houthis in Yemen, fighting, killing, nobody cares, not a peep out of this room. Syria and Iran bombing each other mercilessly. Any resolution for that today, tomorrow, yesterday? We have seen Russia invade the Ukraine for months, but no one's telling Russia to stop. And in this scenario, based on what we're doing today, we'd be telling the Ukraine to stop, defending itself. We look to Africa, and we see where 50,000 Catholics have been massacred in Nigeria. They call it the Great African Martyrdom, and not one of you has stood up to say anything about that. But we are going to tell Israel that they cannot defend themselves. I wonder what the difference is. It's quite clear to me and to many that while we are talking about trying to build bridges, while we're trying to talk about peace, while we're trying to talk about how do you bring people together, you can't do it when you start from a place of hate, and there is hate in the hearts of many who are choosing to rewrite the narrative of what is going on so they could justify how to continue forward. When I was standing right here one week ago, when we were talking about the liberation of Auschwitz, I remarked that it was something that has been said time and time again, how did we get to this point? Ladies and gentlemen, this is how you get to that point. This where you refuse to acknowledge the truth in all its forms, cherry-picking the parts, the words, the Bible verses that you wish to choose to justify what you do, what you say, and how you move forward. So allow me to remind you, those of you who wish to bring faith into this, most of us are very familiar with 10 little rules to live by, right? 10 commandments, I think most of us in this room know well. And while we're talking about everything that's being given forward, what happened to the most basic, "Thou shall not kill"? People intentionally went into Israel to kill people. While you talk about how we address all of that, there's half the 10 commandments have been violated while you talk about which Bible verse you want to use, about which quote you want to give, but we're cherry-picking again, we're cherry-picking still. I cannot cherry-pick the facts of what has happened. And the fact that I know that two years ago, I was there, I had the honor of seeing what it's like, to see how individuals live together, and also knowing and seeing firsthand from the guard posts that you cannot accept your enemies for anything more than what they are. If Hamas terrorists did this, they will do it again. They have continued their unrelenting siege in response to Israel's right to sovereign This resolution, because it does not fully recognize the importance of everything that has gone on in its totality, is wrong for this body. What we have seen from members all throughout this building, elected or otherwise, is an attempt to change narratives rather than focus on the truth, focus on the facts, and focus on a way to bring people together that is meaningful in our city. And yes, there are plenty of other things that we can talk about, but I will be the first to remark that this council has had a storied tradition of opining on issues beyond the scope of our borders, so I do not fault people for that. But what I do fault is our inability to walk and chew gum at the same time. We have ignored every important discussion in this city for months with this becoming the priority. It is shameful. It is an abdication of leadership, and it is a failure by this body to focus on the things that people want us to focus on within our communities. That cannot be understated enough, because I too know how to open my office doors, I too know how to handle my service requests, but I also know that at a time when we have so much chaos in our own city, where we are judged is by what we can actually affect. This is a diversion of the worst, worst kind, because we are trying to divert everyone's attention from the failures going on in our city right now. And that is something that I cannot be a party to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, so I have Gardner, and then I have the sponsor who has asked for deference to close. So if there are no other speakers, after Gardner, I will recognize Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez. Are there any other alders that wish to speak after Alderman Gardner? Seeing no other hands, the Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will begin, as I did on October 13th when we met, by expressing my sincere condolences to all the lives lost, both Israeli and Palestinians. I think we all share that, we all agree on that. I want to thank Alderman Silverstein once again for being a strong voice for the Jewish community. I can't imagine that- I can't imagine the challenges that you continue to face. I have the utmost respect for you and the work that you are doing, you continue to do for the Jewish community. Alderman Laspada, Alderman Rodriguez, thank you as well for writing this resolution. Is it perfect? No, absolutely not, it's not. There could be a lot that we could add or take away from it, but I believe in my heart of hearts that it's a move in the right direction. It helps bring attention to both the Israel, over 1,200 Israelis who died on October 7th, and also the 25,000 Palestinians, over 25,000 Palestinians that have died since October Each of us have about 55,000 residents in our ward. Could you imagine half of your ward, when you go back to your ward, to be dead? 12,000 of which are children. I know many of you in here have children as well. And I know Israelis are also dealing with, even one life is one too many. Again, we can all agree on that. But the amount of lives that we have lost right now, we have, I believe in my heart of hearts, we have to take a stand and show that we are acknowledging what is going on has to stop. How much are we going to let this go without saying anything? Enough? I've had the pleasure of traveling quite a bit throughout my life. I've been to many different places, been exposed to many different cultures. I have not had the pleasure of going to Israel or Palestine. Hopefully one day I can. But in my travels, and I've been in many Arab countries, one where I can actually picture where I'm hitchhiking, because I'm backpacking in this country, in this farmer, this farm, poor farming, man picks me up and he doesn't speak any English, and I don't speak Turkish, and I don't speak Arabic, but I know a little bit of Arabic. And I just remember I was sitting in this car and he's looking at me, and I just told him where I had to go, and he understood enough. And I remember when I left, him saying, "Alhamdu lela, alhamdu lela." And I was interested enough to know like, what is he saying to me? You know? And the Muslims in my community, as well as the Jewish people in my community, have been overwhelmingly open to me and welcomed me into both of their communities. Getting back to what this gentleman was saying, but it was praise God, thank God, alhamdu lela, praise God, in the best of times, but more importantly, in the worst of times, praise God, alhamdu lela. On October 13th, I sit here and I said, a lot of us, many of us, if not all of us, say we want to be a voice for the voiceless. We are blessed to have Alderman Silverstein be a representative for the Jewish community. We had another Alderman, Alderman Smith, who's a representative for the Jewish community. We had Mayor Emanuel, the mayor of our city, as a Jewish mayor. And I also mentioned how, I don't know if we've ever had a Muslim person in the city council. We definitely haven't had a Palestinian member in the city council. And I think it's very important to let people in that community know that even though that you are not physically represented on this floor, that there are people who hear your voices, we hear you. And I don't want to only commend the Palestinians who have reached out to me and Muslims in general, but also Jewish people. I tip my hat to the amount of Jewish people who have reached out to me to say, "Vote in favor of this. We want this to stop." Not that this is going to be the answer to everything, but I thought that that was the utmost, I had the utmost respect for those individuals to reach out. I had Jewish people who also called me and said, "I want you to vote no." I want that to be clear as well. But I didn't have a single Muslim call me and say, "I want you to vote no on that." And in order for me to do my part, to be a representative of my community, I have to be a representative of everyone, and I'm trying my very best, as I know each of you are regardless of your decisions, as my colleague Alderman Spizardo said, we are on the opposite sides of this track. But I just, I guess at the end of the day, I want it to be known that the people of our community, your voices are heard, whether you're pro this resolution or against this So I will be voting in favor of this resolution today.
Thank you. Our final speaker on this resolution, the chair recognizes Alder Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by thanking every one of my colleagues that engaged with the dialogue to get to this resolution. I am sorry to the people who feel like they were not heard or that didn't agree with the process. I feel like I did my best, as did Alderman Laspada, to make sure that people knew where the process was at, what was in the resolution. I asked for feedback, we did it repeatedly. But I have learned a lot in this process, and I am very committed to doing better every time that we have to engage in one of these processes. Here in the city council, we are tasked with a lot of different things, and we know that being an Alderperson comes with a variety of things. Sometimes we are dealing with potholes and zoning changes, or we can be tasked with speaking up around something that is not necessarily happening in Chicago, but that is having an impact in our communities. And we cannot deny that this has an impact in our communities, and not only because we have the biggest Palestinian population in Chicagoland, not only because we have the fifth largest Jewish population in the world, but because we are human beings and we are seeing what is happening to human beings away from here. So I do want to thank the people who engage with the process. It's been almost four months since the devastating events of October 7th happened, and our city, as many other cities across the country, have been in mourning. Chicagoland is home to the biggest Palestinian population in the country and the fifth biggest Jewish population in the world. Both communities have been navigating the impact of horrific violence and destruction. Billions of dollars have been spent on sending weapons and killing mostly women and children. This money that could go towards addressing needs in our city, money we could use to prevent violence, to house people, to protect survivors of domestic violence, to provide comprehensive healthcare to our communities, expand mental healthcare, feed people. The bombardment of Gaza has been constant for the last four months. Thousands of leaders across Jewish, Muslim, and Christian faiths have called for a ceasefire. Just a few days ago, 1,000 black pastors representing hundreds of thousands of congregants nationwide urged President Biden to call for a ceasefire. Part of this group is very own Reverend Dr. Audis Moss III of the Trinity United Church, who helped raise money for a full-page New York Times ceasefire ad from local black congregations in November. Yes, a few days ago, our own Reverend Jesse Jackson and Rainbow Push sent all of us a letter asking us to support this resolution. As the minutes pass, more and more people are being killed and displaced. We, as elected officials, have the power to save lives by uplifting a demand that is now shared by many and to be on the right side of history. In Illinois, many of our elected officials have already called for a ceasefire, Senator Dick Durbin, Representative Chuy Garcia, Jonathan Jackson, Delia Ramirez, Illinois State Senator Karina Villa, Robert Peters, Rachel Ventura, and many others. San Francisco, Detroit, Atlanta, Minneapolis, Oakland, Seattle, St. Louis, and dozens of other cities across the nation have already passed resolutions calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. As a democratic and progressive city, Chicago should be at the forefront of calling for a ceasefire. In accordance with justice and international law standards, our resolution uplifts urgent demands for an immediate ceasefire on conditional release of all hostages and allowing humanitarian aid to enter Gaza. I'm going to say that again. What our resolution calls for is an immediate humanitarian ceasefire on conditional release of all hostages and allowing humanitarian aid to enter Gaza. This includes basic necessities like water, food, and critical medicine. Why is it urgent that we pass this resolution? Over 26 Palestinians now have been killed, the majority of them are women and children. There are people that are still digging through the rubble for their loved ones, for their babies, weeks of digging through the rubble. I've been thinking a lot about how this situation, in the process of working to pass this resolution, became deeply personal to me, and some of it is for the same reasons that my colleague of the 26th mentioned. I am Puerto Rican, I lived under colonialism, I had to do civil disobedience in vehicles to prevent 9,000 people from continuing to be bombed by the US Navy. But we also went through Hurricane Maria, and we saw the bodies piling up because of lack of water. We are the colony of the most powerful country in the world with the most powerful army in the world, and they let 5,000 people die of preventable causes, and we saw the bodies piling up, and there was no space because there were so many. And we still had to go to work every day, knowing that people were dying, and people died because there was no electricity, and they couldn't do dialysis, blood transfusions. And we had to show up every day in our lives, knowing that people were dying every day and that we couldn't do anything about it. And I see the Palestinian community facing that every single day, and knowing that today more people are going to die, and that tomorrow more people are going to die, and people are going to continue to die until a ceasefire is achieved. And the only way to achieve that is to demonstrate consensus in this country. And I remember how outraged everybody was when Trump showed up to Puerto Rico and threw paper towels at my people. People were incredibly disturbed by that behavior. So when our governments don't do what they need to do, we do need to speak up. We have that responsibility towards people. We have the responsibility to say that we don't want any more war, that it is time to protect lives, that babies don't deserve to die, they didn't do anything wrong, that they shouldn't have to be orphaned. There's about 50,000 pregnant women in Gaza right now. They are giving birth in tents, they are having complications, there is no food for them to be able to have the health that they should have. There are women having periods and not having absolutely any resources in order to be able to care for themselves, using pieces of tents as sanitary products. None of the 36 hospitals in Gaza is operational. Amputations are being done without anesthesia. Yes, we have many issues in Chicago that need our attention, and I believe that we can make space for all of them. We can continue doing the work of implementing treatment not trauma, we can continue building the peace book, we can fund violence prevention, we can work on providing housing by bringing Chicago home. Many of us have been doing this work for years. Last night, I was at a treatment not trauma town hall. Tomorrow, I'm going to be at a violence prevention convening. This weekend, I'm going to be at Roosevelt High School, supporting young people at a resource fair. I am doing all of the work. I have participatory budgeting right now in my ward, and it is being run in part by young people in my community. We can engage our communities, we can do the work, we can work on policy, we can do it all. And I'm here to do it with you as well, because we should be collaborating. If we are committed to peace and liberation, we have to be committed to peace and liberation for all oppressed people. We can continue to work on caring for all our neighbors, and also make space to tend to our communities at a moment of such intense pain and devastation. We need to add our voice to the growing number of people demanding peace. One of the reasons we have so many atrocities in history is because the people who could have done something or said something at that time remain silent. I don't want us to be those people. I don't want this city that I love so deeply to go down in history as the ones who were silent when a whole nation of colonized people was being destroyed, and as innocent people were being bombed. I really hope that as a council, we can support this resolution, and I am also ready to work with all of you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alder Laspada has a pending motion for a roll call vote for the passage of this item. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time. Madam Clerk.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please hit refresh, the voting is now open. It may be delayed just a second because it's opening, but it will be open in a moment. I will now call on those that have not voted for a voice vote. Alderwoman Pat Dow, not present. Alderwoman Coleman, not present. Alderman David Moore.
I'm not in.
Oh, is that Alderwoman Coleman? Okay. Alderman David Moore.
Aye.
Alderman David Moore is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Tabarez.
Alderman Tabarez votes no.
Alderwoman. Alderwoman Tabarez is a no. Alderwoman Scott?
No.
Alderwoman Scott is a no. Alderman Burnett, not present. Alderwoman Mitt, not present. Alderman Spisato? Alderman Spisato is a no. Alderman Lawson?
No.
Alderman Lawson is a no. Yeah, I'm going to go back and check. I was just getting through. Alderman Lawson is a no. I want to go back and check with Alderwoman Coleman, if you're online. Okay, Alderwoman Coleman is not present. Did anyone vote that I missed? Okay, we are closing the vote. The vote is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are 23 yays, 23 nays. Per statute, the mayor can vote in the following scenarios when there is a tie or where one half of all the persons elected have voted in favor of an ordinance resolution or motion, even though there is no tie. So I will exercise my vote in my right, and I vote aye. There are 24 yays, 23 nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to reconsider. Oh, okay. On a motion to reconsider. You move to reconsider this vote?
Yes, sir.
All right, Alderman Hall makes a motion to reconsider this vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. This motion fails. Alderman Mitchell, are you aware of any other unfinished business?
Mr. President, I'm not aware of any other unfinished business.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous business. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, except for the ordinance set the date and time for the next meeting, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Be it ordained by the City Council of Chicago, Section 1, the next regular meeting of the City Council of Chicago shall be held on Friday, February 16th, 2024, beginning at 10:00 a.m.
Alderman Mitchell. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, were you finished?
Oh, no.
Oh.
Oh. In the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and force from after its passage, Gregory Mitchell, Alderman 7th Ward.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Mitchell, here are no objections, so ordered on the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, there was no omnibus.
No, that's right.
Okay, we can move passage by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Here are no... So ordered. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, there is no further business for this body. I move that we adjourn.
Here are no objections, so ordered, this meeting is adjourned.